If the Commission will come to order, I'd like to call on, I'd like to call the June 13th, 2019 Commission Meeting into session, and I'd like to call on Worship Pastor Kyle Elkins from the Experienced Church to come forward to lead us in our prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Wayne Blair, and the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, and Tennessee flag, and Worship Pastor Elkins, before you lead us, you may want to share with the audience your event tomorrow night here on the premises.
Yeah, shameless plug, tomorrow night at 7:30, we'll be filling up the square right outside the courthouse for a worship night. Again, it starts at 7:30. We would love to see you guys there. We're expecting probably 6,000 or 7,000 people here tomorrow night, so it's gonna be a massive event. But thank you guys for having me. Let's all bow our heads together and we'll pray together. Father, we love you. God, we thank you so much for this day. What a beautiful day you've given us today. And I pray, God, with the very breath that you have put in our lungs, God, that we give you praise with that, that we glorify your name, that we exalt you here tonight. I pray over those that you put in position of leadership, God, that you fill them up with amazing wisdom, God, that you direct them, or that you guard our tongues tonight, Lord, that we can build each other up, and Father, that everything is done tonight, and God, to see your name lifted high. We love you, we praise you, and it's in your son's name we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three plasars on a field of blue, God, keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Madam Secretary, record the roll. Roll call.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a quorum, and we are now prepared to conduct our business. I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tim Jeff Phillips for the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order, a move that we dispense with the reading, and that they be adopted.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Are there any questions? Seeing none without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'd like to call on Commissioner Jeff Phillips to read a resolution and sympathy of Dr. Elizabeth Hay Ray. Dr. Ray was a great community servant who passed away this past week, a great supporter and philanthropist here in Rutherford County, so Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. Resolution of sympathy, where it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Dr. Elizabeth Hay Ray, a friend of many, and whereas Dr. Ray was preceded in death in 2004 by her beloved husband Creighton Ray M.D., and is survived by her brothers J.I. Hay, his wife Molly, Dr. Robert Hay, his wife Carla, sisters Carolyn Dobbins, her husband Don, and Sarah Ruth Robbins and her husband Ralph, and whereas she gave a lot of time and effort to the betterment of our community, including her major contributions to MTSU, where she earned her bachelor's degree in 1955, and was a member of many civic community and social organizations, including St. Thomas Rutherford Foundation, Oakland's Association, Blue Raiders Athletic Association, Center for the Arts, Discovery Center at Murphy Springs, United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties, MTSU Foundation and Alumni Boards, American Heart Association, St. Joseph's Fund, Murfreesboro Noon Rotary, ACE Learning Center, Read to Succeed, Habitat for Humanity, Alive Hospice, Hospice of Murfreesboro, St. Rose Catholic School Board, Murfreesboro Sympathy and Youth Orchestra, and whereas as a tribute to Dr. Ray's legacy, the St. Thomas Rutherford Foundation named its most prestigious honor as the Dr. Liz Ray Philanthropist of the Year Award, and she has, she was the recipient of the 2017 Athena Award, which spotlights women who have dedicated their lives to making a better community. And whereas we know that her passing has caused great sadness to her family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on this 13th day of June 2019, does hereby extend sympathy to the family of Dr. Ray, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Dr. Ray by the clerk of this legislative body. Mayor Catherine, I move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now I'd like to call on Superintendent William Cope of the Correctional Work Center to come forward and read the resolution and appreciation for Pastor John Spurgeon. Also, I'd like to call on House Representative Mike Sparks, former county commissioner, Representative, are you here? Come on up. And he also has one for Pastor Spurgeon. Is Pastor Spurgeon, would you mind coming on up? We'd like to honor you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
You're welcome. You're recognized.
I'd also like to ask if our staff, and we have some volunteers, I believe, that have worked with John over the years, if you all can just kind of join us as we go Nearly 10 years ago, this tiny, unknown guy came strolling into our office over at the work center and asked to become a volunteer. And the first time that I watched him walk in amongst a group, a large group of hardened criminals, it was immediately evident that his passion was much larger than his stature. And through hard work and dedication to helping those who, as most society sees, as throwaway people, Pastor Spurgeon is now recognized throughout the United States as a leader and innovator in the field of correctional programming. Recently, Pastor Spurgeon accepted the position of Tennessee State Director for the Nationwide Organization Prison Fellowship. Though it's bittersweet, we are very proud of him, and we couldn't, we couldn't ask for a better representative to be taking those talents and that great big passion upon the larger stage. Throughout the years, we have become friends and ultimately family, so I'm very honored to be able to recognize him This is resolution of appreciation for Pastor John Spurgeon, whereas Pastor John Spurgeon has served as a volunteer and chaplain at the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center beginning in May of 2011, and whereas announced his resignation from the chaplain position in June 2019, and whereas Pastor Spurgeon admirably serves the citizens of Rutherford County with his full commitment to his responsibilities as correctional chaplain to work in partnership with offenders, fellow correctional officers, and officials of Rutherford County, and with his full commitment, service, and dedication to the best interest of all the people of Rutherford County. And whereas in addition to his responsibilities chaplain, Pastor Spurgeon has implemented and facilitated nationwide seminars, programs, instruction, and other methods designed to build life skills, develop positive character traits, and change thinking patterns. And because of his devotion to serve, Pastor Spurgeon has been recognized and honored on local, state, and national levels. Now therefore it be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of appreciation to Pastor John Spurgeon for his services at the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center and to the citizens of Rutherford County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be presented to Pastor John Spurgeon as a dedicated and faithful servant with our sincere appreciation, resolved this 13th day of June 2019.
If I'm not mistaken, John, you correct me. I think, didn't your mom dedicate you to the Lord when you were born? Named after Charles Spurgeon, the famous minister. I've watched this guy in action, and that pastor that was gonna lead that service tomorrow night, I appreciate his efforts. A few weeks ago, I had a group called Men of Valor at the State Capitol, got to recognize them. They're involved in mentorships, trying to reach a lot of the young men, and one of the big issues I've been trying to advocate for is the fatherless, those young men that didn't have fathers in their life. This guy's been an advocate, and just a staunch supporter of trying to just make a difference. And I wanted to read a scripture, and this scripture is really what fits you, sir. It's in Matthew 25:34 through 46, and it says, "Then the king will say to those on the right, 'Come, you are blessed by my Father; take your inheritance. The kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world. For I was hungry; you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty; you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger; you invited me in. I needed clothes; you clothed me. I was sick; and you looked after me. And I was in prison; and you came to visit me.' Then the righteous will answer, 'Lord, when did we see you hungry, and feed you, or thirsty, or give you something to drink?' When you see a stranger and invite him in, or you need to clothe, and who clothed you? When did we see you sick, or in prison, or go to visit you?' And then the king replied, 'I tell you the truth, whatever you did to the least of these brothers, you did it for me. Thank you for doing this to the least of the brothers, brother.'"
Thank you, sir. God bless you. Appreciate it.
Any comments, Pastor?
I'm honored. This has been a surprise. Superintendent told me just show up, so I said with my family and with my core team, I'm here. I'd like to thank, you know, Mayor Catherine, he has been a great supporter of the work, what I was doing through the workhouse. I continue to, I'm not going anywhere. I'm still in Murfreesboro. One thing I can say is never, ever forget the incarcerated. We all make mistakes. You know, Superintendent always uses the phrase, we are one mistake away being in the jail. So I take that. God has given a great platform to take Rutherford County. I just came from Riverbend. I was bragging about what God is doing in Rutherford County. They want to hear, the commissioner, the chaplains, they want to see the work what we have done. So I'm proud to be a Rutherford County citizen, that I'm taking the work what God has laid in this county, to the nation, to tell, hey, there is something going on in Rutherford County that the nation can look up to. So I want to thank all the county commissioners for their support, especially Mayor Catherine, and he's like a big brother to me, and you know Superintendent Cope, and all the command staff, and thank my wife and my two, three children for their support, and the volunteers, and above all, I want to thank God for what God has done in and through us. Let's continue to fight this battle of incarceration and addictions that what we are facing in this community. My heart is, I want to take Rutherford County to the national map and show them we can do it, and we are the best. Amen?
Amen.
Thank you.
The Chair will entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution. Had a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, John. Thank you so much, and Godspeed in your future. Thank you for the workhouse, for everything that you all have done and working with him. Thank you, sir. Next, I'll call on, again, call on Speaker Pro Tim Phillips, if you'll come forward to read a resolution regarding Alzheimer's Month. And if Deanna O'Neill and Andy Vaughn are with us, if you'd like to come forward and stand with Speaker Pro Tim as you read the resolution.
Thank you. Resolution regarding Alzheimer's Month, whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder, tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and where there is no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset, or slow the progression of Alzheimer's disease, and whereas an estimated 5.5 million people age 65 and over have Alzheimer's disease, and another 200,000 people under age 65 have younger onset Alzheimer's disease, and whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and the fifth leading cause among the elderly, and the third leading cause of death in Rutherford County. And whereas according to the Alzheimer's Association Facts and Figures Report, the direct cost of caring for those with Alzheimer's to American society is valued at $259 billion, and more than 15 million caregivers provided over $18 billion hours of unpaid care of those with Alzheimer's and other dementias in 2018. And in Tennessee, nearly 439,000 family members and friends cared for people with Alzheimer's and other dementias, providing 500 million hours of unpaid care, with the annual value of this care totaling $6,324 million. And whereas in recognition of the individual families, friends, and caregivers dealing with Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or cure, and whereas Rutherford County recognizes the efforts of Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and other dementias through its Walk to End Alzheimer's, which is now in its 20th year. And whereas these efforts to raise funds and awareness have hereby improved the quality of life for those living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers in Rutherford County, and whereas the week of June 22nd has been recognized as a week herein, the city and county will turn purple in honor of those struggling with Alzheimer's disease, and whereas the month of June 2019 has been declared Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association vision and imagining a world without Alzheimer's disease. And now therefore it be resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners recognizes June 2019 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to wear purple to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association vision of imagining a world without Alzheimer's disease. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Alzheimer's Association by the clerk of this legislative body. Mayor Burgess, I move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Mayor Catherine, I move to approve.
Do I hear a second? I've got a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. O'Neill and Mr. Vaughn. Thank you all for coming, and this is a serious disease that affects all of our citizens. Yes, yes, please.
Hi, I'm Deanna O'Neill, and this is Andy Vaughn with Edward Jones, who is one of our national sponsors. We have a walk in September called the Walk to End Alzheimer's. We would love to have all of you join us. It is September 21st at MTSU. It's at the Dean Hayes Track and Soccer Stadium, and actually Coach Hayes is going to be our honorary marshal. He will be attending with some of his track team members. So we're very excited about that. With this being the 20th anniversary, we would like to really have a great celebration this year, and let people know, not only are they walking to raise funds for research, but they're also walking to raise funds for resources for this community here. So if anybody needs any information on Alzheimer's, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you all. Thank you for coming tonight. Now it's time for our public comments. We have one person signed up to speak tonight, Mr. Edward Phillips. We ask that you come forward, give your name, address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. You're recognized, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Mayor, my name's Edward Phillips. I live at 4563 Jones Road, Christiana. I want to start out by saying why I'm not here tonight. Tonight, I'm not here to sow any contention amongst the Commissioners here. I know you guys united stand a better chance of doing great for our county, as opposed to being at each other's throat. But also I know that at the end of the day, not everything's gonna get 100% majority, or 100% approval by all 21 Commissioners. I'm not here as a personal issue against any one Commissioner. This is not aimed at any Commissioner, or to cause any angst among any other Commissioner. I'm also not here to fight a losing battle, because I think tonight you can achieve this goal. First and foremost, I'm here to exercise my right to address my government and redress grievances. But I'm also here because I was also taught that it's never wrong to fight for what's right. I'm here to give you all a little bit more knowledge that y'all may not have had the other night, to empower you to maybe give this one more shot. And I just believe tonight is the last best hope to end this proposal. I'm speaking of the access to the county health insurance by elected board members. I could go over some of the same reasons why you guys may have voted against it or to rescind, but I'm not gonna do that tonight. Let me equip you with that knowledge. Through some research, on page 306 in Robert's Rules of Order, lines 25 through 31, a motion to rescind can be done three, one of three ways. One is the two-thirds vote that y'all were aware of the other night. The other option is, doesn't apply because there won't be notice tonight. And option three is by a majority of the body, of the whole body, which is 11 members. And at any one point of the two votes, 11 members have voted to get rid of this proposal. And why am I stressing tonight? Let me utilize one example real quick. Murfreesboro, in about 35 minutes, will probably approve a 36% tax increase. One of the reasons why cited by the mayor and the council that they would not be able to, that they weren't able to see this coming, is why they're at this point. I want to advise you tonight, this proposal, in 20 years, will be a tax increase that will be needed and funded by the taxpayers. It's not just right now that 100% will be paid by you Commissioners. Because one day, a Commissioner will stand up with good intentions in their heart, and say that we need to subsidize this for our county Commissioners. And at that point, it will become on the backs of each and every taxpayer of Rutherford County. I just want to take one more moment to encourage you to take courage tonight, to present this one more time in the new business section of your agenda. And just remember, it's never wrong to fight for what is right.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Next on the agenda is elections and confirmations. So I call on Steering Committee's Vice Chair, Craig Harris. Commissioner, you're recognized well.
Commissioners, we have a list of notaries, and I move for their approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second. Any questions? Seeing none without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We need to fill a vacancy on public building authority, term to expire January 2020. The Steering Committee recommends James Davis. I so approve for his approval.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We need to fill a vacancy for county coroner. The Steering Committee recommends Carl Hudgens. I so move for his approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We need to fill three vacancies on the Lindbaugh Library Board, two of them to expire in 2022, and one to expire in 2020. Steering Committee recommends Chris West, Phil King, and Lisa Trail. I so move for their approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We need to fill two vacancies on the Community Care Board. The Steering Committee recommends Frankie Johnson and Joanne Medlin. I so move for their approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And we need to announce two vacancies for the Industrial Development Board, Health, Education, and Facilities Board, to replace the expired terms of Bill Jones and Warren Russell.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. Mayor Catherine?
I got that. Commissioner Sparks?
Oh, it's all in fun. It's okay. You'll not be walking in September.
All the items appropriate to be on that agenda, and I move that the consent agenda be approved.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Excuse me, on the board members, there is money involved on a lot of these. So you're on the board. Please cast your, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Board to vote.
21 yes, motion passes.
Next, we have the, we're about two minutes away from our public hearing. I prefer just to take a short recess before we get into our public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a reason why Mr. Demossi can't come on up and tell us about the first one, and then by the time he finishes, it'll be 6:30 to open the public hearing?
Good idea. Mr. Demossi. Or you could sing a song, you know how I sing.
I was thinking puppets, or, you know, tell a joke, or something like that, you know. No, I don't think that'd be very funny, honestly.
You're recognized, Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I appreciate it. And good evening, Mayor Catherine, and members of the county commission. We have two rezoning hearings for you tonight. The first hearing deals with property located along Old Nashville Highway. This is by Mr. Don Bruce. This property, the applicant is proposing to zone this property. It's about 36 acres or so. They're proposing to zone about half of it, approximately 17 acres of it, that fronts along Old Nashville Highway to commercial neighborhood, to allow a mixture of single-family, multifamily units, and possibly small businesses. The remainder of the property originally was being proposed for light industrial zoning. I'll get into that here in just a minute, but ultimately was recommended for commercial general zoning. But the remainder of the property, which is about 20 acres, would be used for various types of commercial uses, possibly for stockpiling dirt, rocks, sand, building materials, things like that would be allowed under the commercial general zone. There would also be structures for storage and maintenance of equipment on this back part of the property. The legal description that ended up being done showed about the first 450 feet of the property to be zoned commercial neighborhood, with the remaining property in the back to be zoned commercial general. Access to the property, of course, would be from Old Nashville Highway. Any new or modified ingress egress points would have to be approved by the Rutherford County Highway Department. There is a concept plan included with your agenda materials that you'll find on your iPads. You'll also see the You'll also see the concept plan that shows a gravel storage area as well. The zoning ordinance does require a hard dustless surface, but areas primarily used for storage can remain as a gravel type base. Of course, verification of any development for county requirements on this property would have to be done through an engineered site plan that would be approved by the planning and engineering department if it met the criteria or the planning commission. Landscaping, of course, this would have to be appropriately screened from properties that are zoned residential. There is some residential property surrounding it. On one side, however, there is some heavy industrial zoning, the old low jack plant to the southeast roughly is where you'd be looking at, and performance standards would also apply to this development. During the public hearing, most of the discussion was about increased traffic along Old Nashville Highway and drainage concerns. There was also concerns, like I mentioned, about the light industrial request, that portion of the property, which ultimately was recommended for commercial general, and then concerns about the changing of the area from residential community and also being in relative close proximity to the battlefield. The planning commission did ask about the range of uses in light industrial as opposed to commercial zone, access to, possible access to city sewer, which is a good ways away, buffering floodplain issues, things that we've discussed, and development potential. And again, following the public hearing, they did recommend a commercial neighborhood along the frontage at first 450 feet, but they did ask and recommend for the light industrial to be zoned commercial general instead. That recommendation did receive a favorable approval by the planning commission, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from Mr. Demossi, from the commissioners.
They'll have to, they'll have to show that they do meet fire hydrant, or fire protection requirements, not necessarily with fire hydrants. That would be up to the fire chief as far as the buildings itself, if they have to have sprinklers or whatnot, but the fire chief would make that determination as to what it required. But that would be verified during site plan review. Yes, sir. I'm not sure if there's currently a hydrant. Hold on, let me look at the, seems like there's one not that far away. There's actually a hydrant at the northwest corner of the smaller parcel, 1702, so it would be within that. Yes, sir.
Other questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, I'll call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. The public hearing, anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue, please come forward, state your name and address, whether you're for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one come forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Do I hear a motion? I'm sorry. Mr. Sellers.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you would like to speak on this issue?
I'll speak on Mr. Bruce's behalf.
All right, all right. You're recognized, and I'll declare us back into recess.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, my name is Ewing Sellers. I'm attorney in Murfreesboro, speaking on Mr. Bruce's behalf tonight. This piece of property along Old Nashville Highway, Mr. Demossi stated, across the road there are some homes, and the commercial neighborhood zoning for the first 450 feet would be well suited. It joins these homes, and the rear half of the property, the commercial general, is bordered along the east by the CSX Railway and by the northwest with the Buddhist temple. I don't believe the Buddhist temples in, I believe they're in agreement, and they don't have any problems with this rezoning request. And again, to the southeast, there's the heavy industrial low jack plant, rock crushing area, and we, Mr. Bruce just believes it's a good fit for the property to get this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. Is there anyone else desiring to speak for or against this issue? Anyone else? I'll declare the public hearing closed, and Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Commissioner Irvin?
Commissioner.
Turn your mic on.
As said, we approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number two. Mr. Demossi recognized.
Yes, Mayor Ketchum, thank you. The second public hearing, and the final public hearing on rezonings tonight, is for property located along Rock Springs Midland Road. Mr. Ruston Smith is the applicant. The applicant's proposing to zone a portion of the subject property to establish a base of operations for a landscaping company. The applicant purchased the property, didn't realize that zoning approval was necessary to run this kind of a business. Landscaping companies are classified as a construction, sales, and service type use in our zoning ordinance. The zoning classification he's asking for, commercial services, is the first commercial zone that will allow this use by right. The applicant has included a rough concept plan showing his intentions with this application, and that has been included with your agenda materials for reference on your iPads. The applicant has, indicates that he has four employees that work for his business. He also has landscape equipment, several vehicles like dump trucks, landscaping trucks and trailers, typical hours of operation on Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., although the employees are only on site for about the first hour and the last hour in the evening as they load up their trucks or come back from working. Maintenance of equipment is typically done on Saturdays. The applicant had originally requested just a portion of the property. When we did the staff report for this, we actually did the whole property, and upon further discussion, which I'll get to in a minute, it was reduced. Access to the property will be from Rock Springs Midland Road. Any new or modified ingress egress points, of course, would have to be approved by the highway department. Again, similar comments from the last public hearing we had, as far as the material of the parking, any vehicular maneuvering areas would have to be paved, but storage areas could be gravelled. This, again, will all have to be verified during a site plan review process, along with landscaping screening and the performance standards. The planning commission had questions about the buffering requirements, the amount of property to be rezoned, possible tax benefits for only zoning a portion of the property as opposed to the entire property, and also where the closest non-residential zone properties to the subject property were in location to this. After discussion, the planning commission recommended only a portion of the property to be rezoned. You look at the map, you see it's kind of a skinny in the front and then kind of widens out in the back. That whole skinny portion's about three and a half to four acres. He's only actually, with the legal description that we received, he's only asking for about half of that skinny portion, which is roughly two acres, like 1.85 acres. So the legal description was received for that and has been included with the resolution so that we can keep a tab on that. But that was the, basically, the, kind of the quick and dirty of this particular application, if you will. The vote did pass by a nine to one margin at the planning commission for recommendation for approval, and with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? Any questions? I call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, please come forward, state your name and address, and whether you're for or against their proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed, and the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I call for approval with staff comments.
Motion for approval on staff comments and a second. Any questions or discussion? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Members, we had no unfinished business on the agenda tonight. Next, we'll move into our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Reports by standing committees, Budget and Finance. Commissioner P., you're recognized.
Well, it only took five hours to get through this the other night. Hopefully, it won't be quite that long tonight, especially with the consent agenda taking up most of that. To start off with, we have a resolution to do some cleanup work here at the end of the year. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Increase expenditures, other contracted services, $42,000, with a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $42,000. This is to pay for the cost of putting one of our inmates in community care. From the drug court, we have increased expenditures for the director of $11,250, social security $700, pension $1,200, employer Medicare $165, with a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $13,315. And this is to pay out the leave left from where Trey King has moved. Next is an increase in expenditures in overtime pay, $900, social security $55, pension $96, employer Medicare $13, for a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $1,064, and this is to take care of some overtime charges at our garage. Resolved this 13th day of June 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All right. Members, you're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Our next resolution, whereas the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office desires to work with Siemens Industry Incorporated to implement a performance contracting project to improve the infrastructure and operational efficiency of the jail, and whereas the project will audit the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment, building automation, lighting, plumbing, laundry, kitchen, and refrigeration systems, and whereas the result of the audit along with an agreement for a reduction of operating and utility costs, replacement of inefficient and aged equipment, improved laundry and kitchen efficiencies, and to correct deferred maintenance items will be presented in August 2019. And whereas should Siemens not be able to provide an agreement providing sufficient cost savings from the inefficiencies to be modified, then the Siemens shall not be due any payment. And should the county decide not to perform the modifications of a cost-saving audit, then Siemens shall be paid $30,000 to offset the cost of the audit. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a letter to Siemens, a copy of that attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, setting out the county's desire to perform the audit. Resolved this 13th day of June 2019, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? All right, members, we're on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes, motion passes.
Okay, our next resolution, whereas Enterprise Fleet Management offers a vehicle leasing program with an open-end lease and terms ranging from 48 to 60 months, and whereas the open-end lease allows for early termination of the lease, unlimited mileage, the acquisition of new and safety, and safer vehicles more frequently, and the ability to trade vehicles when the market for the vehicle is favorable. Whereas Enterprise Fleet Management Services are available through the Sourcewell National Purchasing Cooperative. Whereas the 2019, 2020 budget has been prepared using this vehicle acquisition method, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a master equity lease agreement and amendments thereto, subject to the approval of the county attorney with Enterprise Fleet Management, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and incorporated herein by reference at length, set forth herein at length verbatim, for the acquisition of fleet vehicles. Resolved this 13th day of June 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? And a second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, you're on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes, motion passes.
Okay, our last resolution, whereas Rutherford County desires to upgrade its communication system to digital technology on the 700 and 800 megahertz band, and whereas communications equipment is currently offered by Motorola Solutions through the Tennessee statewide contract 418, and whereas the proposal by Motorola Solutions offers 2033 radios and software upgrades, tower site upgrades, and the installation of the radios and site upgrades at the cost of $16,600,000, and whereas there will be a need to fund additional communication system costs of approximately $550,690 outside of the Motorola Solutions contract to perform the upgrade. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a communications system and service agreement, subject to the approval of the county attorney with Motorola Solutions, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the upgrade of radio systems at a cost of $16,600,000, and fund the additional cost, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 2 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. $550,690, which is necessary for a radio upgrade with a total cost of $17,150,690 to be funded from a future bond issue. Resolved this 13th day of June 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Mr. Gurley.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to say this is something that's badly needed. The, but I would like to break up, make a few points. Number one, I believe it's on the public safety agenda for next week. Without, this involves tying us into the Murfreesboro radio system. There badly needs to be quickly that memorandum of understanding. I think it is on the public safety agenda for next week, because without us tying onto that, we'll be buying $16 million worth of stuff that we can't, don't have anything to connect to. It'd be like buying $16 million worth of furniture and no house to put it in. It'd be like buying $16 million worth of furniture and no house to put it in. The other thing, as you noted in here, there's $500 and something thousand dollars. There's aspects that are non-Motorola, and that involves structural engineering, et cetera, looking at tower sites. The one thing that I did not see in this resolution that I would like to probably make an amendment to the resolution to allow the mayor to have authority to do, this is something I brought up at part of, when we were initially looking at this, and that was a possibility of some consulting services. Well, we've already done, we've already made the decisions and so on. But this is a large project. It's a sixteen and a half million dollar project. We only have right now, to my knowledge, one, basically one employee that'll be overseeing this, that he actually has other responsibilities unless that's changed. I would like to give the mayor the authority, I think a lot of it can come out of that $550 million, but I would like to specifically give the mayor authority to hire engineering services and project management services as needed. Like I said, I think this $550,000, aside from the Motorola contract, will probably cover a lot of that, but there's nothing in this resolution that specifically gives the mayor authority to do this. And like I said, this is a, this is a big project. I've built a lot of radio sites, a lot of radio systems throughout my career, and I'm not sure that anyone's really aware of how large a scope it is. So I'm going to make an amendment to this to allow, amendment to, the amendment specifically is to allow the mayor to contract for project management and engineering services from within the monies appropriated. I so move.
There is a motion. Is there a second? Do we have a second on the first motion? Yes, we did. Is there a second on the amendment? Seeing none, amendment, motion fails without lack of a second. Back to the original motion for adoption. Commissioner Piercey.
We come through budgets the other night, and we voted on it. I was the only one that opposed this. The cost, I'm sure it's needed very, very badly, but we're talking about $16 million. We're talking about an additional close to $5 million for a maintenance contract to go behind it. To spend this kind of money on the eve of begging our property owners for a tax increase, I have a little issue with that. That's the reason I did not support it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I'll make one comment. Commissioner, I did talk to the city manager and to the chief of Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue, and was assured by next public safety meeting next week that we would have that MOU as far as their commitment to putting into place the tower at Shiloh on Halls Hill Pike, which was part of the condition in the very beginning, that they will erect that tower that will complete, I believe, our, the 10 tower system that we're looking at in this proposal. Any other comments?
We're on the board. Members, if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
Guys, I was so excited about getting these three passed us. I left out a quick claim deed, I believe. Final resolution, whereas the city of Murfreesboro desires to acquire property owned by Rutherford County by quick claim deed for $1, and whereas the property, which is approximately five and nine tenths acres, is bounded on the north by Thompson Lane, on the east of Old Nashville Highway, and on the south and west by the property of New Vision Baptist Church, and whereas the city of Murfreesboro intends to sell approximately two and three, thirty-three hundredths acres to the property to New Vision Baptist Church, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a quick claim deed, a copy of the same being attached heretofew as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim for the aforementioned property to the city of Murfreesboro. Resolved this 13th day of June 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? And a second. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Kush.
Chairman P., help me understand. The county owns property, right? We're going to sell it to the city for a dollar.
Correct.
Going to turn around and sell a part of it to the church for profit.
I believe you, you've got the gist of it, yes.
So, tell me why that makes sense.
Well, here's my take on it, and there might be somebody that can explain a little bit better. I don't know how many of you have been by this property in the winter, but most of the property that we own is where they're slating down that slope right there on the, where the bridge goes up. But we actually didn't know that we owned property there, is my understanding. The way the deed was written, evidently we were given a small parcel of that property. We have got some good working conditions going on with Murfreesboro City right now. You know, just, just for instance, this communication system we just voted to put in will actually be located in their new building over on, I believe that's Highland. But I think it's in the best interest of us as a, as a county to let Murfreesboro have this. And I don't think that's anything that we're actually going to be losing, but.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Kush, the property is really not worth anything to us. It's, it's not a very buildable site. So, and the, the close relationship that has developed with the city, we're going to sell them this tract of property we really couldn't build anything on for a dollar, and then they're going to give us that whole corner lot on the corner of Blaze and Fortress to build the, the new DMV and the clerk's building for a dollar. So I think it's a pretty good swap to our advantage.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Matter of fact, the, the MOU was approved, just, the MOU was approved, I believe, today, or last night by the city council. We do have that. Any other discussion or commission, or discussion? Mr. Johnson.
Another addendum of that, Mr. Kush, is the fact that when this building is built on Blaze and Fortress, we're going to be able to lease part of that property, or part of the building, back to the state of Tennessee. And, you know, we're not losing any money. We're going to be, it's a win-win situation. So for a dollar, I think it's a great bargain.
Let's go on to board on this one. We do have a second. Members, if you would, without any further discussion, without objection, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have Health and Education Committee. Commissioner Allen, no report. Property Management Committee. Commissioner McAdoo. We've had a request on the resolution to lease the old store at Rockville to the Rockville Historical Society. Chairman Pettis Reed made a good catch today after reading the original land lease, I believe. And we feel like in consultation with our attorney, we probably need to bump this from the agenda and roll it until the August agenda, so we can work out a little bit more fine detail, make sure everybody signs off on it. I think in consultation with our legal staff, it was determined the original lease, I believe, Commissioner Reed says that we, they cannot move the building, and as the current lease is written, that we're going to have to tweak. They're going to have to make sure that they can't pick it up and move it. You know, if it blows away or burns up, we still own the land underneath the building, but we just want to make sure that it, they understand that it can't be moved. Am I correct in that? Okay, okay. Without objection, we'll, we'll bump this from the agenda and roll it to the August full county commission. Nothing else from Property Management. Public Safety Committee meeting, our committee, report? No report. Public Works and Planning Committee? No report. Steering Legislative Government Committee? Mr. Stevens, you're recognized. Noel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steering has two resolutions for consideration tonight. The first one is a resolution to ratify amendment to Private Chapter Number 20, House Bill Number 1539, Senate Bill Number 1542 regarding the Human Resources Department. Whereas the Tennessee General Assembly has enacted Private Chapter Number 20, House Bill Number 1539, Senate Bill Number 1542 regarding the Human Resources Department, and whereas a two-thirds vote of the county legislative body is required to approve Private Chapter 20, House Bill Number 1539, Senate Bill Number 1542, with certification of the same to the Tennessee Secretary of State. And whereas a copy of Private Chapter 20, House Bill Number 1539, Senate Bill Number 1542, is attached heretofew as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County that Private Chapter 20, House Bill 1539, Senate Bill Number 1542 be, and the same hereby is adopted, ratified, and approved by Rutherford County. It is further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send a notice to the Secretary of State of the state of Tennessee of the ratification of the Private Act as required by law. Resolved this 13th day of June 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Any discussion? We're on the board, members. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Board to vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A second resolution is regarding the commission, or the employee handbook, and specifically where complaints go if someone has one about our budget director. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners desires to amend Section 1016 of the employee handbook, and whereas the procedures for reporting harassment contained in the current version of the Rutherford County government employee handbook should be amended to clarify the reporting procedures, and whereas the proposed amendment provides greater detail to Rutherford County employees. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Section 1016 of the employee handbook be amended by deleting the second paragraph under other harassment and inserting in lieu thereof the attached 1016 harassment policy revision 61319. Resolved this 13th day of June 2019. And Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Any questions or discussion? We're on the board, members. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
All right. Statements and announcements. Mr. P.
I got a call from a volunteer firefighting chief, and I wanted to make an announcement for him. The Christiana Volunteer Fire Department is having a fundraiser June 22nd, that's Saturday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at their station at 4031 Sledge Road. Now they're going to be serving Uncle Bud's Catfish and Chicken, and it's going to be catered by Uncle Bud's. The cost is $15 for a person, and it's all you can eat. And this is actually, I think, the same cost at, at Uncle Bud's, but anyway, that would be a, a good idea to get out and support these guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other statements and announcements? Commissioner Reed.
Just a reminder of everybody that the oldest Fourth of July celebration in the state of Tennessee happens in Rockville on the Fourth of July, beginning at 10 o'clock in the morning, running to about 2 o'clock. Invite everybody out to the annual Rockville Fourth of July picnic, and like to see every one of you out there. Bring your appetites and a lot of fun and a lot of opportunities to talk to a lot of friends and family. Like to see you out there.
Absolutely. Always a good time. Other statements and announcements? Commissioner Harris, you're recognized.
Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know that on June 26th, I mean 27th, I'm going to Israel, and one of the things that I want to do is, if you're interested in putting your name on a, on a piece of paper, and I would put it in the Wayland Wall, the Western Wall. So if you're interested in doing that, I would love for you to give me your, give me a sheet of paper with your signature, and I'd be more than glad to do that for you.
Well, thank you. That's very nice. I'd just give you the whole list for the whole commission. Thank you. Any other statements and announcements? Commissioner Rother.
I was waiting on all the fun stuff to get out of the way. Not that that wasn't fun, Commissioner Harris, but having breakfast and all that, good stuff to go to. This is a question for Nick. Is it appropriate, I know it's not, the motion reconsiderable, a motion to renew a prior motion from a prior meeting? Is that in order?
What would be renewed? What motion would be renewed? I think that matters.
The motion to rescind the insurance for commissioners, the boards and commissioners.
Sure. I, I don't know of any prohibition that would prohibit this commission's ability at this meeting to raise another motion to rescind. I think that you can do that. If somebody wants to, they can. Even though it was raised last time and defeated, you can do that.
Well, I want to clarify with you, because I'm not an attorney, but I did do a little reading, and the only appropriate measure was to renew. You couldn't reconsider, because that has happened the same day of the vote. But some, I appreciate Mr. Phillips getting up here. He brought up something that I really haven't thought of, and that was, it does kind of open the door for future commissions to supplement the commissioner's premium. open the door for future commissions to supplement the commissioners' premiums every month, which is costing us more money. And then I sat here tonight, and we're spending much needed, and I voted for it, over $16 million. And somebody else mentioned, on the eve of us begging for tax, property tax increases, employees, parent, or employee spouses, I brought this up before, being off of the insurance. It just seems like we've got a lot coming up between property taxes and certain improvements that I think enough has been put on the backs, or is going to be put on the backs of employees and the citizens of this county. So I would like to motion, make the motion to renew Commissioner Allen's motion from last month to rescind.
I think that that's a proper, you didn't ask, but I think that's proper form. Essentially what you're doing is you're bringing a motion to rescind the action from, I believe, March, where it was approved to give the various members of the boards insurance. Is that the, is that the motion?
Essentially, but what I had read, I had to renew the last motion that was made, which was Commissioner Allen's motion to rescind. I may be wrong.
Yeah, I don't think that you need to actually do a, first, a motion to renew, and then a motion to rescind. I think you have the ability now to simply make the motion to rescind, just like what happened last session.
Okay. I'd like to make that motion to rescind.
That's an appropriate motion. And a second. Any discussion? Questions? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just to clarify, is this majority vote, two-thirds vote?
Yeah, I'd be happy to try and interpret this, this large book here. We got down and dirty with Roberts last time, and we got into the minutia of whether it was two-thirds of the entire legislative body, or two-thirds of those members voting and present. And let me read a section of it if I could, and then I think, give you what I think is the answer here. And I read this last time, that a vote on a motion to rescind would require, A, a two-thirds vote, there's no qualification added onto that, so it doesn't say a two-thirds vote of the entire legislative body. So that would be a two-thirds vote of those members present and voting. B, which doesn't apply here, because we wouldn't, we didn't have notice of the intent to bring the motion. And C, a vote of the majority of the entire membership, which would be out of the 21 commissioners. So 11 votes would do it, would suffice, or two-thirds of those voting in present, which here there are 21, and that would also suffice. Last time, neither of those were met anyway, based on the votes that were cast, so it didn't matter. But a majority here of the 21 would be sufficient to pass the motion to rescind. Does that answer your question?
11 would pass the motion.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Gammon.
I feel, Phil, this is a size of mine, again, as Edward said, Phil, you have to know, nothing against anybody in my profession, my issue, most of mine is, you know, the kind of taxpayer, the retirees in the county, and the employees of the county. And maybe, you know, this is something that really should come up at the end of our term, just like the recent increase in pay. And I know the issue with that part, the part I have is, is that, you know, whenever people talk about the cost of this insurance, that there is claims to be made, I understand that. That's coming out of the pool that's out there, I think, around maybe 32 million, maybe whatever, so. The situation on that is, of retirees in this county, you know, as I said before, next year, I'm going to back there, but retirees pay just as much, and they don't give them a provision insurance on top of that. I pay $550 a month, have no complaints, have no complaints. But then, when we bumped off, and I've been in insurance committee for many years, and I do understand the pros and cons, what you got to do, the employee, and you have to tax their insurance, it is, this county has a good insurance policy. They, they, they have a good, I know, they're probably one of the better ones in the state, to be honest. But the issue still comes back to me, when we kick off the spouses and force them on the other insurance, I understand the reasoning behind that, but I don't think we understood what was going to do to some of these people. You know, if it increased to 100 bucks out of their pocket, you know, that's still 100 bucks a month, just like it was 75 bucks a month. This, this January, all the retirees got hit with 365. And that's a hundred. And as I said, that was a bad one, is it is people on fixed income that's already been retired ten, 15 years. So my issue is, is that, the issue I have is, is I don't feel like it's fair to the county employees, the retiring employees, and obviously with the situation going on, we have to pay something to the taxpayer. So, you know, I'm, unfortunately, among the friends that are here, I'm going to have to vote to rescind this, this issue, and let it come back up at another time, and we can have more discussion and look at it, just like we did on the May 30s.
Other comments, discussion? Commissioner Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've, this will be the third time I voted no on this. To me, it was a bad idea from the very get-go. When we removed spouses off the insurance a few years ago, and then for us to turn around and feel like we were entitled, leaves a bad taste in everybody's mouth. The thing about politics and the thing about constituents, when it comes to politics, perception is nine-tenths of the law. And the perception is, we are granting ourselves something that others can't have. Now, we know that we are 100% liable for the monthly fee, but that's lost in translation with constituents and the spouses and things like that. That is lost in translation. The perception is, we are voting ourselves, which is of 21 part-time people, an insurance package. It's, it's, it looks bad, it smells bad, and come election time, it's going to come back and haunt some of you folks that have voted for it. I guarantee you. Because I get calls and emails every week about how bad of an idea this was. So I'm going to vote no again, and I'm going to stay on record that I voted no, because the perception is, it's a perk for us when we've yanked the rug out from full-time employees' spouses. It's a bad idea.
Mr. Gerling.
Yes, I'd like to just, after Commissioner Kush said he was going to vote no, that a yes vote on this motion will remove the eligibility for members of this body and school board, et cetera, to get into the insurance pool. So if you want to get rid of this, vote yes on this motion.
Commissioner Don.
I concur with Commissioner Kush. I will be supporting this motion to rescind. And kind of one of the straws that kind of broke my back on it, I was a supporter initially, was that one of the greatest costs we had were spouses. And when the spouses came off the rolls, we, we had the, we had a good frugal businesses and decision to make, and we were rewarded with, we lowered our cost when spouses came off. And for us to add any other individuals when spouses can't be on is simply, in my mind, adding a potential cost in claims now and in the future. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Other comments? Commissioner Rother.
One last time, I couldn't agree more, and to Commissioner Kush's comment. We are part-time people, elected officials, we're part-time employees, not eligible for this coverage yet, we're giving ourselves that. But the main thing I wanted to, it's my disclaimer, I'm an employer, I'm a spouse of an employee. I've said it before, and I'll probably have to say it over time while I'm here, I am a spouse of an employee. It did not affect me, and I'm bringing this up, and have tried to get this kicked down for a long time, and it has nothing to do with my household. Because quite honestly, since my wife's been a county employee, our insurance has gone up every month anyway, or every year anyway. So it, it's going to go well up. So it's really not affecting me. I'm, I'm just thinking about so many other people, especially the employees, the part-time ones, and so I just wanted to disclose that I am a spouse of an employee.
Other discussion? Commissioner P.
Well, it did affect me. My wife was county employee, she's now retired, and I was kicked off. The only reason I was ever on is because the county made it a requirement when you retire to have your insurance set up the way you want it in retirement. And for me to be on it, I had to be on it then. Up until that time, my wife was on my insurance for about 25 years, and because of the changes that this commission made, I was forced to change over to the county's insurance. Then the county, of course, made another change, so I'm on my own insurance where I currently work, and have my own insurance. Now, I supported this in the past, and, you know, I've got several operating phone numbers, and I've got email accounts, and text, and I have, I don't know, a Facebook account I rarely look at unless I get a notice. And, you know, I hadn't had the first person call me about this situation, not one. If this was a burning issue, I promise you, the people out in my district would be lighting my phone up, because they do when it is a burning issue. Now, I do not plan now or in the future to ever use this insurance. It costs too much, and the commissioners are not subsidized like regular employees. You know, the county pays 80%, or we're headed toward 80%, and the employee pays 20%. And that's the way most insurances are set up with, in the private sector, too. However, this, the commissioner, if they decided to go that route, would pay 100% of those costs. Now, yes, if they have a claim, that would come out of the pool, that is capped. I voted for this, because over the years, I've seen so many commissioners that are giving their time, and a lot of effort and work for their community through this commission. And they, a lot of them don't, didn't have and don't have insurances that they can go to. A lot of them are, you know, have their own businesses. And I think that it's something that they deserve, and I think Commissioner Phillips had a good comment last time, you know, this is kind of saying, we don't matter, guys. We really don't matter. And that's what you're telling me when you stand up here and say, you know, it's not right that we get it. It's not right that we pay 100% of the cost of an insurance policy. There's something not right in the thinking there. Thank you.
Other comments?
Call for the question.
Question's been called. It's not, it's not debatable. Question's been called, and it's not debatable. I'll entertain a motion, or the question's been called, and we're going to vote on calling the question. If you want to continue and have other comments, you'll vote no. But, so all in favor of the question being called signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Well, we'll go on the board, okay? I'm deaf in this ear, so I couldn't, I couldn't balance.
Do it back.
Yeah. So we're going to go on the board. This is the motion only for calling the question. Will, please cast your votes, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twelve yes.
Twelve yes, none no, motion passes.
Motion passes. Counsel is asked to, to look at this, it may require two-thirds.
Commissioner Stevens was looking, I think that, that's correct. So the, so the motion did not pass.
Motion fails. Motion did not pass. Okay. Back, back to discussion. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. I got a little emotional last month, and I apologize for that. The way it came out in the Daily News Journal was all on the emotion and not the content of the debate. I keep hearing a lot of talk that relates to county employees and the insurance plan, and the spouses being removed, and other things that, in my mind, has nothing to do with the issue at hand. I feel like this body is being singled out, because this body is the one that voted to save the taxpayers millions of dollars upgrading and revamping our insurance plan. And by the way, our Risk Management Department, when they put this process together, was doing just that, looking at ways to save the taxpayers dollars. And what we did was not any different than every major company and corporation in Rutherford County had done, every one. We weren't doing any different than that. And I get a little out by it being brought back up time and time and time again, spouses, the spouses, the spouses. And by the way, spouses still have access to our benefit plan. If they're employed, and that other employee offers medical benefits to that spouse, that's where that spouse has to go first. And once again, I think every major employer in Rutherford County has that same policy, the exact same one. So we're not asking us, as an employer, to do anything any different than any other employer in Rutherford County's not doing. The comment was made about what the future may bring. Who knows? Who knows? And it's my opinion that sometime in the future, if a different county commission, and I think Mr. Phillips used 20 years, 20 years down the road, they could vote it in, anytime they wanted to. So this one, in my opinion, adds protection instead of just the opposite of that, because this commission has said, if a commissioner, or a road board member, or a city, or a county school board member needs insurance, they have it available to them at full cost. Our finance director, our risk manager, has said it would have no visible impact upon the finances of this county. And I'm going to repeat that, zero, none, zero, no impact. I also have an issue with being called a part-time employee. And if you think about it, each and every one of you, do you consider yourself a part-time I don't. And to compare offering benefits to an elected official, which we've got one sitting right up here, to say that an elected official shouldn't have access to those, to me, is just, it's just not logical. That, and I don't know why I'm, I'm so emotional about this issue, but I am. I don't have a dog in this hunt. I don't. I'll never have that benefit available to me. And if I did, I was employed, and, and I'd never have that benefit available to me. But who's to say? But who's to say that some point in time, one of our own will have a catastrophe in that family? And so what if it costs the county money? It would with any employee that has a catastrophe in that family. No more, no less. So to say that this commission is part-time and doesn't deserve the opportunity for that benefit, I, I have a little bit of a concern about it. I think we keep looking back, and as we've said many, many times, we have to start looking forward. We have to start looking forward as a county. I think there's a lot of us, Paul, that doesn't have a lot of hair or kind of gray hair, that knows that this benefit will never affect me or my family, never. But there are those of us that support it simply because of what the future may bring. And some of the people who are raising those questions, I'm not 100% sure that they understand what's going on. Why not try it? We could rescind it next year, if it costs the county thousands of dollars, but why not give it a chance for a couple of years? I think the, the point brought up by Commissioner, by Virgil, that related to timing of that is a pretty valid one. And I really didn't think that thing through at that time. I think that's a valid one. And I think we ought to really consider that as we go about making those type of decisions in the future as to the timing of it. It may should have been a little bit better, but I, I will shut up. But, but there are a couple of things that were brought up that, that I object to, and I still think that this commission and future commissions ought to have a consideration similar to what our other elected officials have. Once again, I'm not saying that we'll ever be, quote, "full-time," but I am saying that I'm not a part-time employee. I'm not. I've been elected by the District 17 of this county, and they trust me to make decisions that are in the best interest of everyone in the county. And I do think that as we go forward, there may be opportunities for that particular benefit to be utilized by this commission or one of the other two boards. I, I don't know, you know, if it fails tonight, if this motion to rescind fails tonight, will we bring it back up next month? Will we bring it back up the following month? Will we bring it back up the following month? I'm just not sure how, how many debates we have to go through. But, and I have a little bit of an issue with that. That's the way it should be, and then that's the way it should be. And once again, I, I don't think it looks bad into the community. I think that we, as a commission, aren't doing a good job in explaining to the people who make those telephone calls, the difference between what they're hearing and the actual facts of it. I would hope that we will continue on the path that we've decided at least twice before, and give this an opportunity to either succeed or fail, and then make a decision sometime in the future. If it doesn't work out, then we can make a, make a decision to rescind. Thank you.
Ms. Nolan.
The only question, the comment that I wanted to make, that I keep hearing over and over, is that it's a catastrophe, it's going to cost our insurance for all the employees. You made the point that the commission, or in this group, 35 potential people would pay 100% of the premium. Again, it's like, oh, there might be somebody in this group of 35 that might be really, really sick, and it's going to create a problem for the insurance fund. I go back to, because I'm not understanding that argument, with what the school board is projecting, 218 new employees, and our budget for next year is 20, and in the highway board is three. There's 241 new people that will be potentially coming on to our insurance plan and paying at max 20% of the premium. So, you know, we say that our, our plan is so big with 11,000 members, we've got 5,000, 6,000 employees, that 35, out of the 35, I just don't believe it's going to move us into a catastrophe. So I just, I just didn't want that that be a, there may be other issues, but I don't think that the finances is one of them, or unless I'm seeing something, y'all are seeing something that I don't.
Commissioner McAdoo.
I'm on the insurance committee, and HR is back there also, but she brought up a good point, and I can't let it go by. 35 of us, 35 elected officials. Now, how many of the 35 elected officials that are already on the county insurance? And how many of the 35 elected officials have got other insurance packages that they'll never be on the county insurance? And I'm one of them. So if you look at that 35, and you take away the ones that's already on the insurance, and then the others that have insurance packages that they'll never be on, it, it, it's not going to break the county. Now, I'm for it, and I was for the pay increase. And the reason I'm for it is to probably bring more individuals that would run or be involved in our county election, our county political system. Now, if we offer little benefits, like maybe an insurance package, a little increase or whatnot, maybe it will bring more people that will get involved. But that's the only reason.
Other discussion, members? I didn't recognize you. So, but you're calling for the question now? I'll recognize that. Question's been called. Is there a second? Question been called and seconded. All in favor of calling for the question signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, back on the, we'll go on the board on the motion to rescind. Yes is to rescind. Members, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
15 yes, 6 no. Motion to rescind passes.
Motion to rescind passes. Any other questions? Any other statements or announcements? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? Have a motion? Motion to adjourn, and a second. We stand adjourned.